All right, I got seven o'clock. I'm gonna call the meeting to order. Thank you, everyone, for coming out. First item on the agenda is the approval of the minutes from our April meeting. Questions, concerns?
I have none.
You have a motion to approve?
I saw a motion.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed, motion carries. Action on plan's about to expire. What's that about?
I think. I'm sorry.
Take a minute.
It's gonna be a regular item on the agenda from now on, in case there's any issues on the plan status.
Okay.
Need action.
Right.
It's just a more formal way to keep it on the agenda. There is the one plan that did have a time issue, number fourteen Select Properties, Augustine Road, with their request to be taken off of tonight's agenda, they also provided us an extension.
Okay.
That's no longer an issue. And just an FYI, if you remember, there was two Select Properties, Road projects. One of them got approved, the annexation, and that ended up in the approvals, but then the wrong one got taken off of. The pending.
Gotcha.
So, the one that says, number ten, it says annexation, that's the one that got approved. The other, the cul-de-sac development is, was only a sketch plan, so it's not a timing issue, but, so next month, I'll get that right on the Tower. So, there's one Tower Road application, the sketch plan for the cul-de-sac, that's still
Right.
Pending application. And the annexation was approved. So that is.
That was the lot line adjustments.
The lot line. So, that's been moved to the improvement. So, that's all there is. Everything else is included.
Okay. Is the, is this gonna happen, the action at this point in the meeting, from now on?
I believe so. Yeah, it's gonna keep Sunday again. That was the direction. It's like the board is gonna have a separate item on all their agendas, sort of a catch-all. Because with the new advertising requirement, you have to have it listed on the agenda.
Okay.
Actual item, so they wanna keep it on the agendas, so if something does come up that needs to be done, there's an agenda item for it.
Okay. So we'll do the action before we get into applicants. All right. Anything else?
No.
Okay, thank you. All right, so, first applicant, and only applicant on the agenda, is Rich Hill. I'm assuming that's you.
It is Susan Rex for the Estieng Engineering.
To the podium, please, yeah.
I was here back in March, we had some discussion about the plan that was submitted. And we had since revised the plan and resubmitted. One of the items of change to note is that there was discussion about where the lot line was drawn for the parcel that's being consolidated with the parcel in Richland. So, we had, it was kind of straddling, and there was some property in West Rock Hill that was going to be consolidated. We changed the plan as you suggested, and the lot line is now running consistent with the township line. So, all items have been addressed, plan-type items have been addressed. We have, still are asking for the three waivers. And we're still working through sewage, the sewage planning process. We're working with the Health Department and our sewage consultants to get all the approvals and permits in place to for that existing house. I can go through them one by one if you want.
If you don't mind.
Okay, sure. So, the first comment is a waiver, and we're asking for a waiver to allow existing vegetation to meet the buffering requirements. Number two.
Hang on a second.
Sorry.
Can you point out where that is, and?
Where that is? It's along the property line between the existing farmhouse and the remainder of Theodavia. So, it'd be.
Was there a note about existing vegetation being adequate? Or was that another one?
There are no.
Do you remember?
What, from last month?
No, from your review letter.
Yeah, right in number one.
It is not. Yeah, right there. Quest of allowing existing vegetation. Do you find the existing vegetation adequate?
Yeah.
All right, thank you.
So, number two talks about having to work with Richland Township to get approval on the subdivision as well. And we are working with them. Don't wanna submit a plan to them until we're, you know, sure that this plan will be approved. I don't want them to have to look at things twice. But, they have assured me that it's a minor subdivision process on their end, and we'll provide you with all the documentation once we get it. Number three talks about deeds of transfer and consolidation. That's a, we'll comply, that's something that'll happen after the plan's recorded and deeds are prepared. Number four, this one talks about Lot Two being separated from the remaining land of Rich Hill Road by the, it's separated by the road. And your solicitor has prepared a document that will go along with the deed and the recording that sort of advises future property owners that, you know, they have to go through some steps before they can build on the property. Number five, I just explained to you about the sewage, we're working through that. Our next step, I believe, is to get some permits and approvals to build a new system on that Lot One. So we can move forward with sewage planning. Number six is a waiver for installation of street improvements, cartway widening, overlay, curb, sidewalk, and drainage along the frontage. Number seven is a waiver request for street lighting. Number eight is just a statement that says monumentation should be installed prior to plan recordation, and we will comply with that. Number nine talks about recreation land. I would, I would guess that a fee in lieu of would be applicable here, and we'll comply with that. And number ten talks about any financial security agreements, opinions of costs that may be necessary, we'll also comply with.
All right. So is there anything we need to discuss on this, Steve?
Well, the only questions would be the other waivers. We talked about the buffer yard, which we said that the existing vegetation is adequate. You have the street improvement waivers, which if waived, would require a $7,000 contribution to township. And then, street lighting. Generally, you haven't required streetlights. For minor subdivisions, you have the driveway lampposts sometimes, but there's no houses here.
How is the road out there now, Steve?
We just paved it a couple of years.
Okay. The last time I was down, it was a little rough.
Really rough a while back.
Yep. All right, so you wanna talk about the waivers? I don't have any issues with the waiver. As long as, as long as you're, you think the plantings or the existing vegetation is sufficient. I don't certainly don't have any problem with the others.
It's as much as you would get.
Right. Okay.
Did the compressor station installation require any cartway widening or road improvements associated with traffic for that facility? I don't remember.
Well, there was, no, ultimately, there was no land development approval for that project, so no.
Officially. So.
All they did is they guaranteed that they wouldn't damage the road, and we determined when they were done building it. They didn't require, there was no repairs required.
And construction's finished there, correct?
Yes.
But in terms of ongoing usage, is there any is there any activity on an ongoing basis that would benefit from cartway widening?
At one point, we talked about, could you even get a fire truck back in?
Well, getting back to the compressor station is different than
Right.
Frontage, and that driveway is in Richland Township. Not even in in the town, in West Rock Hill Township. The road's been functioning for these years, there's the commercial business on, there's multiple commercial businesses on the road at this point. On the widest road we have, but it's nothing else.
Got anything, Tim?
Well, essentially, Lot Two is deed restricted, then, is that what we're getting at when we're going to the?
Lot is the bacon piece on the opposite side of the street.
Yeah, that would, if before any development could happen, I would have to go through the resource planning and sewer to.
Right, it wouldn't, it wouldn't come in as a subdivision, but they would have to prove that the
Right.
sewage facilities are adequate, and they could get a well, and if they met all the other zoning standards.
Essentially, it's deed restricted that they have to do that in order to build them.
Yeah.
Any comments? Alex?
I have none.
Well, someone wanna make a motion to recommend the waivers as presented? I'll figure it after this is too public.
I'll say motion.
I'll second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, motion carries. All right. So, what are we looking for, preliminary, final here?
Yes.
Okay, so before we do that, I'm gonna open a floor for public comment, so they're gonna have to come up and use a podium, so if you don't mind stepping aside there. Any public comment? So, you have to come up to the microphone, so it can be, you have to be recorded. And it won't pick you up back there. Your name and address.
My name is Kathy Wireback, and I live at thirteen eighty-five Welland Road in Quakertown, across the street from the compressor station, and next to some of the property lines that they're discussing subdividing. And my concern is that they're trying to, so what I wasn't clear on is, are they trying to add acreage land to the existing compressor station area? As they're subdividing, how many parcels is this?
Part of it would be available to the compressor station.
Correct.
Parcel B. So.
Yeah.
So, keep in mind that the property that we are subdividing, it's already owned by Adelphia.
Yes, I do know that.
So, in subdividing the plan, we are creating a lot that now has the farmhouse on it.
Right.
The remainder of that property is gonna be consolidated to two separate pieces. The bulk of it is going to the compressor station, which they already own, so Adelphia will own the entire piece now, and it's consolidated into one parcel instead of two separate. And then, a small piece in the back is going to be tracked in Richland Township. And then, the second lot is on the opposite side of Rich Hill Road, is essentially kind of subdivided by that.
So, my understanding of when they bought the parcel, besides hushing the people that own that property from fighting against compressor station being built there, that they purchased it to be a buffer to the compressor station. So now, you're going to allow them to make that fight that we said that that parcel that the compressor station was on was too small to begin with, to build a compressor station. You're gonna give them more land, so then, in the future, they're able to expand the compressor station? So we're opening that can of worms up for them to be able to do? By allowing them to attach that property? Because how else would they build across that line? If it wasn't joined to their current one point some acre lot? And is it worth the money that we're getting for the waivers? Me, as a resident sitting there, having a bigger facility in the future? And other residents around that, that have a well that I can't control what goes into the air, that comes back down to the ground into my well? Or that I can't breathe when I walk out of my house? That's fine, but how can they build across that line unless you give them that property? And join it to their current? I own the property next door to my current farmhouse, but I can't build a building across both lines?
Notwithstanding the concerns for the issues around the compressor station, there's nothing in attachment ordinance that would allow the attachment to prevent them consolidating.
That's the issue.
Well, I made my piece, and it's on record, so.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Christine Shelley, fifty Welland Road. I also live across the street from this. I don't understand why we would grant any waivers or exemptions until we wait and see what happens in court. As was mentioned here, there was never any approval for this. They were never granted any approval. So why are we now fast-forward for years, we're gonna grant them these other approvals and waivers when we're still in court with them? And, and I don't think that, you know, recreational land fee in lieu of is a big fat, no, I just don't know how we can be talking about preservation of open space in one moment, and then I mean, this is opening the door for just so much. We see it, we've, we've seen it coming down the road since 2018. When they printed in Richland Township's newsletter that nothing to see here, folks, we're not doing anything major, and we're not gonna be messing up your community, and now they just are in the process of tearing down part of an L1 historical structure across the street. I mean, did you see how much force it took them to tear that barn down? It's heartbreaking. They're ruining the historic the historic integrity of our community. And I don't think you can put any kind of a price tag on that. And I just don't know why we owe them anything. I know we can't stop them, but I don't think we need to move forward so quickly with these decisions when we pay the cost for the rest of the time that we live. And I'm a fifth generation to live in this community. You know, I'm not a transplant. And my grandmother would be. Why would they let them do it? That's what she would say. Why would they let Adelphia come in here? I, I know, I know your hands are tied, and I know that you're on our side, but I'm just saying, because it needs to be said. That's all. I'm on record, I've also said my piece. And every person in our community feels this way, and not all of them can make it to these meetings, because some of them just are physically restricted, and they can't get out here. Thank you very much for listening and for your time and your attention.
Anyone else? All right, seeing no others, move forward. What's your thoughts on these? You've already granted, voted on the waivers. The discussion on preliminary, final.
Like Mary had said, that there's you can't hold anything up for pending.
Pending litigation, litigation is not.
And it's not pending with the township.
It's not pending with the township. Right. Her opinion was the pending litigation did not prevent the attachment from acting on it. Or did not give the reason, a basis for not acting on it. I'm sure she'll weigh in on that again with the Board of Supervisors, whatever the status is at that, at that time.
Right. All right. I wanna make a motion to recommend preliminary, final.
I'm figuring that there's not a whole lot that we can do.
One, two. Can I get a second?
I'll second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed?
I did, too.
All right, motion carries. Yes? All right, thank you.
So, I'm cleared. We're not intending to come back to the Board of Supervisors until it resolves.
Rich Hill.
The sewage issue in Richland Township. Or, at least the sewage issue, I guess the Richland Township's not. Either, either, somebody's gotta go first. But the sewage issue needs to be resolved.
Sewer and then Richland Township. All right, next on the agenda is old business. I have no old business. Anyone have anything?
No.
New business. I guess we're looking at the electronic sign ordinance.
Has to be out of Quakertown.
Yeah, right. Yeah. Not allowing that.
Well, I didn't write this, so.
Okay.
But I will try to.
What are they, what are they looking for? Yeah.
What is the main, that highlighted thing, that one sentence in two thousand five C, I mean, I saw some other things down there, but.
Oh, yeah. No, the main issue is the when the zoning ordinance was last revised, the signs, it prohibited all electronic signs, kind of lumped everything, the video signs and all kinds of electronic signs together. And then, it's, you know, sign usage has developed to the point where a lot of people have you know, sort of message signs, but not running video on them, actually determined that 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 should be allowed in certain circumstances, even for your own park. Building is necessary.
One or the other.
Right. So, it's an amendment to the ordinance to allow electronic signs that present a static message. And static doesn't mean permanent, but it, it limits how fast that it can refresh.
Once every thirty seconds.
So it can't be a moving you know, video on the sign.
Right, but they would cover a gas station with the electronic pricing.
Or, yeah, somebody that wanted to advertise a sale, or the hours of operation. Maybe those things. And do it with an LED sign instead of a printed a printed or a the old-fashioned plastic signs with lights inside. So this would allow them, but only on the main roads, right? So where does it say that?
At two thousand six one.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Ridge Road, Bethan Pike, State Road, and Long Avenue between Farmer's Land and Ridge Road.
Right, so it's essentially the commercial village zoning industrial district, so where you would have commercial businesses.
But it's, it's not exclusive to that, because this, what it says here, two thousand and six dot one A, notwithstanding chapter four fifty, section two thousand and seven, two thousand and seven covers R A, R C, S R, D R, the residential areas, because Ridge Road and State Road, I guess probably Long Avenue too, go through the residential zones. So I was hung up on that for several days. It's like, why would we let electronic signs posted in residential area? But if you read, and I did, that section two thousand and seven, even, that talks about signage in those residential areas, it's still fairly restricted.
Right.
So, on one hand, you could say, why would you even wanna go there? But on the other side, it's like, you know, it's still fairly restricted anyway, but.
I mean, that's a good point, and that may need some clarification. Is the intent, and I don't know this for a hundred percent, because like I said, I wasn't involved when the manager and solicitor were talking about this, and she, and Mary put this together. I don't know if it wasn't the intent to do only the commercial or non-residential districts along those main roads.
Right.
But I see what you're saying. It talks about the main roads, but it doesn't exclude
But if you look at
residential zones.
If you look at C below there, it says, "All electronic signs shall advertise only the business or use on the property on which the sign is located." So unless you're putting up an electronic sign for a garage sale.
Well, we have electronic sign to say I support Brussels sprouts for governor. It's like, you know, what's the, you can't do that. But, we'll find out. But if you look at that two thousand and seven, even on the static signs, it limits it like two square feet.
Right.
So, it's you could be an annoyance if you wanted to, but not very much of one. Because some of the other, when it talks about two thousand eight, two thousand nine, when it talks about the industrial areas, it's like twenty square feet, and much, much bigger signs. But the two thousand and seven, it talks about the residential areas, it's, it's fairly small.
Right.
But I think it would be cleaner to cut the residential areas out. You know, if somebody really had a pain about it, they could
Yeah.
ask for a zoning variance, rather than have it, you know, blanketed, covered, a part of the ordinance, that they could do that.
Right. That's a good point. What about Old Bethon Pike, the F W? They have one.
It's a good question. The grandfather? Their illegal sign grandfather, I don't know.
Was it there before?
I don't think, I would if you read the description of what classifies as an electronic sign for this, it talks about you know, five thousand nits in the daylight, and two fifty nits at nighttime, and LEDs, and it, this is fairly it, it doesn't mean a sign with a light on it. It's talking about
Yeah, electronic.
Digital sign, basically.
Sign, right?
Yeah.
A little.
Maybe I'm picking up a different sign.
Yeah, they have, they have one.
Okay.
Yep.
Yeah, it's not a full, it's not their full sign, it's just a smaller
Right. Little rectangular thing loaded around.
Well, I could ask the question of Greg, what he considers.
Right.
Yes, the other question is that highlighted part with white and clear lights. I mean, a lot of these now have the capability of having any color you want in there.
Yeah.
Well, and that's actually in the existing ordinance, and the white and clear is a reference to an internally lit sign. That's like the plastic facing, and you can only have wider, clear light bulbs inside. I don't think that was meant to say that you, the LEDs can't be colored.
Color.
Only be internally lit.
Yeah, I mean, most of them are red.
The LEDs, you said.
Yeah.
Yeah. But I mean, it's like the one up in Quakertown, you can get any color you want, basically.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, and there's I don't want to remember. Oh, regarding the sign illumination, there's another section that I think has to be adjusted in, in the B C zone, one two thousand ten point B. 2010. B also talks about illumination. I think that needs to get wrapped into the one other thing, and I was just going back and forth with Greg on this before the meeting, was the size assigned for municipal use. They have a 12-foot standard and a 20-foot all square feet and 20 square feet. The 20 square feet seems to be the way the ordinance is written for multi-use properties like a shopping center. You have multiple businesses on there. And I would presume that the township did go that route per se, the park, and wanted different messages on there. Like, essentially it would be replacing the, the board that they have the letters.
Right.
But they might need bigger than 12 square.
Right.
Like, that might need to be clarified.
Yeah.
The other thing I need, I, I guess I'll ask for your input on it. You go to the third page, section H, there's a buffer planting requirement.
Yeah, it's still the flowering trees.
And I couldn't figure that out until it finally dawned on me. That would only work if the sign was parallel to the street. And you can put a tree on either end. That wouldn't be blocking the sign and the shrub in the front that would block.
Right, yeah.
Sign was perpendicular to the street.
You know, plant a tree in the middle of the road.
Right, the tree would be in the road or behind. I, I don't know what ordinance that came out. I'm sure it came out of some other township.
Right, yeah, that's, uh.
That might need a little closer look.
Yes.
I think the concept is there that if you're going to put up a this sign to do some kind of landscaping around the base of the sign.
Right.
I don't know about the extra trees.
Yeah, I mean, how many businesses would, aside, aside from their business name on a side being parallel to the road, most advertising is going to be perpendicular.
Right, freestanding signs are generally out closer to the road and they're perpendicular to it.
Yeah.
General. So that, that may take
Yes.
a look at that.
So what do they want out of us tonight?
Your input.
Do we have any other input?
I guess your comments and whether or not you think this is a worthy ordinance to move forward. It will be, I imagine it will come back when, since it's a zoning ordinance, it's going to have to be advertised and have a formal hearing. I don't think, I don't think this was advertised, but I'm not a hundred percent.
Be appropriate to take comment?
I don't know if people have a chance to, if you know what we're talking about.
Um, I mean, I'm not a person, I know that.
Park and Metro have actually been pushing for it.
Right. That makes sense.
For them.
Well, I think it isn't a bad idea to get it on the books before we have an issue.
Right.
Yeah. Yeah, I mean, you know, bringing in, in the consideration, the conversations that we've had about this already, I'm, I'm fairly on board with it.
There was somebody that said they had a question.
Somebody had a question? Yes, sir. Oh, you. Yes, Kathy. Depends on where the church is, I guess.
It's fairly restrictive in terms of where it's allowed.
That's, yeah.
St. John's was on, um, Allentown Road, it's in churches.
Nope.
Yeah, it says excluded.
Electronic signs should be permitted along Ridge Road, Bethelon Pike, State Road, PA 152, and on Lawn Avenue between Farmer's Land and Ridge Road. So Allentown wouldn't be considered.
I'm just trying to think what other churches. I mean, there's a, there's a one down here in the corner. Was that St. Peters Falls?
Right down here?
Yeah. Jerusalem, New Jerusalem, yeah.
Well, that's on the road, that's on.
That would, they could potentially do that.
Yeah.
I mean, can you put a old meeting house, church, whatever that was called there, a meeting house road?
Yeah, what, by Fresco down the back of Fresco.
St. John's has like, you know, you go out and change the numbers and they were thinking about when you have clients, if you can change the first times.
Can you, can you put something in about churches or?
Yeah, well, exception for churches.
We could ask. Then we can run it up.
Like Paul.
Not sure.
Yeah, right. Anyone else? Okay, thank you. Alright, so we want to, uh, at least give it a thumbs up.
I think in general.
In general, yeah.
Something that needs to be worked out, but I mean, I think it's, like Alex said, do it now before we have some kind of issue.
Right.
Right? Before we get to Quaker Town sign.
Yeah.
Well, once we get the traffic circle there along, they can put it in the middle.
Alright, so we're, we're on board with, uh, further discussion on the item. How's that?
Yeah, sounds good. Do we want to make a list of the things we thought about or not?
Uh, Steve?
I have my note.
Is it limited to non-residential, put in an exception for churches, and reconsider the buffer plantings, the things I had on it?
Yeah, the only other one I had was probably VFW. See if that fits in the, you know, specifically.
It's a church.
Yeah, we're, I was gonna say, we're, you know, VFWs or legions or.
Churches and.
Yeah, churches and veterans organizations.
Right.
Nonprofits.
Well, I can have one.
Alright, so we're going to move forward. I think that's about all we have tonight.
Public comment?
Alright, is there any other new business? Anyone have?
Go like the old business, whatever happened with the battery place? No.
Okay.
No, that, I think that's still coming along. Something.
Oh, the battery storage?
Yeah.
Yeah.
I, every time I think it's dead, they call Greg and say, hey, we're still looking at this.
Yeah.
And then we don't hear from him for another year. And then he gets a caller email saying, "What's me?" He'll hear anything.
But no, that wasn't my question. Select properties on Lawn Avenue, the, uh, appeal or anything like that. With the deemed approved, is anything progress with that?
Uh, no, the township filed their appeals, some residents filed appeals. Township denied the plan, select properties appealed the denial of the plan. So there's cross litigation at this point.
What about the request to see how they were planning on searing everything before we considered any more of their plans?
That was kind of the reason we didn't want them on Augustine Road was going to be coming on this, this community.
Right. I just wasn't, I mean, we requested that, that plan. I'm assuming we've never gotten anything.
No, nothing formal. Unofficially, I know what their thoughts are. Um, and catch it this way. As long as they don't force the issue with their time limits, you could keep delaying them for them to answer that question. Just, just like one of the reasons we have the action on plans. If they come to a point where they don't want to wait for the planning commission to keep asking what's going on with the sewer and they say, "We're not going to give you another extension." You'll, you'll have to act on the plan. It does, it's not, it's not a reason that it holds everything in abeyance. It can be your policy that you don't want to take action on the plan that doesn't have the sewer resolved. But we have to be cognizant of the timeframe.
Got you.
Uh, the Juan Avenue plan is a little bit different because they're in a sewer service area with Percasie Borough Authority or, sorry, Percasie Regional Authority. We know how they're going to get there. They're going under 309. They're going to a pump station on, on, uh, Mountain View Road and serving the project. So while the sewer line isn't there, we know how they're, we know how they're going to do it and it's in a service area, except for the properties close outside of the BC district.
Right.
So those couple of properties going up to Forest Road.
Right.
They're not in the BC district. So that's a little bit different circumstance. We know how they're doing it. It just isn't there yet.
Right.
You start talking about the Telford Borough areas, that's in that Nebulous Zone 2 of Telford Borough that they're not supposed to move into before Zone 1 is done. So it's a lot more of an open question, how do they get that accomplished? But they have not provided a, you know, an overall plan of how to do it.
Thank you.
Back when we were working on the comprehensive plan, I remember, I don't remember very correctly, but it was a magic number of around 300 connections that would make it financially worthwhile for Percasie to serve that area. And, you know, my thought was select properties keeps trying to dump everything in order to drive up the numbers. Whether, you know, whether it's Augustine Road or this side of the triangle up here at the corner, which was also in the Telford area, is that they were trying to get closer to that number so that Percasie would have justification for spending the money to serve that area. Because they would have somewhere closure to the number of connections they were looking for. Now that they, and this was before they ran the line up to Mountain View Road on the other side of 309. Probably cut into that as well.
I mean, I agree with you that there was a discussion of that sort. Um, but it wasn't necessarily financially viable for PRA to install a line. It was more of a generic, how much could the development support? Um, if select property chooses to build that line and spend an extra million dollars to do it and they don't care, it will happen.
Okay.
Um, it's, you know, PRA would not, you know, stop that. They're going to charge their same EDU fees and, and collect their rents for the connections to the line. If somebody else funded it, developer is willing to fund it for the extra cost, the, the issue was, yeah, on a practical side, a developer or an authority looks at, you know, sort of like, like we talk about with sewer extensions in the township, can we get it to that, you know, 20, 30, $40,000 number that would be similar to a, a sand mound or, you know, on online system. They look at that too for their budgeting purposes, but if a developer is willing to pay whatever it takes to get sewer there, authority's not going to say, "No, don't, don't extend sewer."
Anything else?
Nothing.
Alright, we're going to move forward to public comment. Any public comment? Yes, sir. Please come up to the mic.
Since you brought that select property up.
It, we, um, we were talking about.
What was your name? I'm sorry.
Harry Kostick, 111 Out of House Road. We're talking about that water maintenance coming across. These 25 townhouses do new needs, sewer and water. They need water for those 80 homes. We're saying that it's making it better and it might be, but it's also, and putting that sewer under is opening up our township for that. Correct?
Well, they're not putting sewer on.
They're putting up sleeve in. It's sewer. It's, okay, I'm sorry, let's not, um, so that we are. Is there any way we can stop putting a sleeve in there to, to stop the growth in our township?
Wouldn't know how. It's already zoned here for BC and VR. That damage is done.
Okay, that's what I, that's what I wanted to know. But that, but the problem is it opens up a lot more than that. And, I mean, he gets his 80, he gets his water for his 80 homes. And if sewer comes around, he's probably going to want to pump it up this way than a million dollars around the other way.
Now, just for clarification purposes, there's two different discussions about going under 309 with utilities. The sewer service to the, the property, you know, called Norcal Ridge Road, the 80 lots of select properties would go under, would be a PRA project that would go under at Mountain View Road.
And that was discussed that it was too much money, correct?
Well, not if the developer is willing.
Okay, okay, okay.
Then the second location was a piggyback on the North Penn of water line, which is at Augustine Road, coming off of Lawn Avenue, not Augustine, Almont Road.
Almont, yes.
Some reason I get those two roads. Coming from Lawn Avenue, uh, from the Sellersville system. It's now that North Penn owns the Sellersville system, coming across there and going to Ridge Road. And Telford Borough had talked about putting a parallel sleeve under 309 at that water line location at Almont. So those are two different, two different authorities.
Well, the problem is, and even though it's village, it still opens up a can of worms once you run water up to that corner. You know? But apparently there's.
The state will tell you that you can't build developments.
Can I have one other comment? The other thing I'm worried about is if you go under Penn dot specs, it's 10 trips per household and just with those two units, that's going to add 1,000, over 1,000 home, 1,000 cars in that Lawn Avenue and Ridge Road development, which only has a turning lane on one side. Is there going to be any consideration for select homes to have to put other three turning lanes?
Sure, yeah.
Yeah, I mean, the traffic.
Yeah, they, they've been asked to do, instead of piecemealing it, do a unified traffic study for all of their developments, adding all the traffic together and primarily looking at the, the Juan Avenue Ridge Road intersection. We don't have that information yet.
So, thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Kathy? Sure. Yeah, it's a different topic.
Thank you. No, no. Um, it's Kathy Wireback, 1385 Wayland Road, Quaker Town. Um, I forgot to ask, when they, um, when Adelphia gets to join the current compressor station building to the property on Richell, is it, what's the zoning going to be then for that?
Doesn't change.
And what is it currently? Just unclear?
Residential conservation.
RC there, right?
So, is that correct?
Yeah. Yeah, it's RC.
Okay, I just wanted to, no, thank you. My neighbors will ask me when I get home.
Thank you. Anyone else? Alright, seeing no other public comment, I'd look for a motion to adjourn.
Also motion.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed. Motion carries. Thank you, everyone. Have a good night.
Thanks.
Have a good night.